Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And now call order December tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the board trustees time being six twenty-nine. These all rise to the. Let me lead this.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic or which to span one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You have been roll call please.
Trusty Gator.
Here.
Trusty Gayley. Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Teets. Trusty Regan.
Here.
Mayor Protonic Hall.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Are there conflicts of interest related to the good night this evening? Will I move on to item B one public comment individual wishing to speak? Please come up to the podium, write your name down, and also state name and address for the record. Um, you will be limited to three minutes during public comments. Anyone wants? Which ones? No comment. Uh, on the consent agenda consists of the meeting minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting and presdees resolution zero-one dash twenty twenty-three dash. Or yeah, a resolution designing a public space for both notices during public meetings. And resolution number zero-two dash twenty twenty-three resolution adopting the pre-mile plan for municipal annexations. May I motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. Second. Have a quick question before we roll call. Were we able to make those adjustments in minutes?
Yes.
Great.
That's that's what's online.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Maybe a roll call.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Gayley.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Regan.
Yes.
Mayor Protonic Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the first item, um. I went to audit engagement letter twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two audits, Miss Campbell will be presenting.
We need members of the board, um, tonight I have before you a audit agreement letter from Mayberry Company LLC. Um, a little bit of history on this item in December, we have an RFP out for audit services. We're using two proposals, one from Mayberry Company, one from the Eagle Company. Um, the reasons why I have brought before you the Mayberry Company engagement letter. Um, are a few, uh, price comparison, it is more aligned with what I had budgeted for our two audits being done at one time. Um, they also specialize in small municipalities that work with itself where, um, either the rifle. Um, is to be a belt and a gun ball, so they do have expertise with a thought system. Um, also, we will be getting a higher level of crystallization of the work Mayberry. They have a smaller staff, which means we'll have the same auditors coming in. We won't be asked complicated questions, there's not going to be a lot of that before with them. Um, also, they come highly regarded, we have engaged services with Rainfather, one commercial management solution, and she worked with Mayberry for a very long time, and she hired right then. I have put before you, um, the cost of service. Or what it's going to take to get these two audits done. Um, one other thing I would like to know is that the engagement letter is a little different than most, where we don't have a concrete deadline of when the twenty twenty-two audit will be complete. Because we have to do all the twenty twenty-one audit work before we can even start up. So depending on how long that takes, we may be looking at a longer time.
Any comments or questions from the board of trustees? Any comments, question for the board of trustees, trust, trustee Gator?
Sure, um, so presented to the finance committee last night, we had a lot of really good conversation, attorney answered questions. Um, overall, the finance committee was very comfortable in saying that they feel that charity selection of Mayberry would be the right way to go with. Um, they like the fact that they are going to be smaller, give us more personalized attention. Um, there were some questions about the cost, uh, one of our members of finance committee in his past life is an auditor. Um, but he just was thinking their estimate might be a little on the low end, just knowing what we're going through, he doesn't know for sure. But it does say in the contract, there is the kind of what it could go over, that's why we do have the rates here. Um, but their biggest thing was they felt that regardless of even if it did go over, the difference was like a hundred and thirty hours is proposed for Mayberry, the other company was proposing like two hundred and forty-five hours. Like they were saying was going to take significantly longer in their proposal, um, for what they were bidding, and so the finance committee felt that especially, um, inherent just the work that Mayberry has done. Um, it worked well with the town they've worked with, there have been some issues with the other company that. Then feel as comfortable working with them, so that was where they felt very comfortable recommending with Mayberry. And so I just wanted to share that with the rest of the board, so the finance committee was very much in favor of moving forward with Mayberry adoption. They just didn't want to make sure that we were aware, just because there's a lot to do with the twenty-one audit, there is the possibility it could run over. So it does talk about in the letter that if we, if it's going to significantly go over the budgeted seventeen thousand, then then they would come back to us and that they would. Let us know what that amount would be at that point to finish things up, so just something we need to be aware of, hopefully it goes great and it doesn't come in, like when we looked at their other. Um, municipalities they've done, they were all kind of in that range of about a hundred and twenty hours to a hundred and forty hours, so they're all pretty close to what they quoted us. So hopefully we'll be right in that ballpark, but just something for us to be aware of. From a budget standpoint, there might be a need down the road for us to expand additional finances if things do go over. So and then the rates, just so that we are aware of this, this is something I asked for, um, are in here, because it does talk about their hourly rates, that's how we're billed. Up to the amounts, um, if those hourly rates are in here, and my understanding is this will once, if approved, these rates would then be posted alongside the audit, um, letter on the left side, so public can see those as well.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Not trustee Regan. No problem. We're good. Thank you. Uh, are there any comments from the public on this? May I get a motion in a second?
I move that we accept the three point one and twenty-two audit engagement letter with Mayberry and company LLC. I'll say.
For any final comments or direction of board trustees? No. No further comments, may I get a roll call on the motion?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Gayley.
Yeah.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Regan.
Yes.
Mayor Protonic Hall. Yeah, Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, you had an item of the lease for the parking lot in downtown area of District seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in front of you today is a continuation of a lease, uh, there goes, entered into by the town in twenty thirteen, parking lot that's next to Soul Squared, which is going to use as public parking. Um, the original lease, I believe it was unfinished at that time, or at least the town has improved that lot since twenty thirteen, and now it's especially into. The parking lot is public parking, it is also used as off-site parking for town staff of the working business services building. This lease extension is for one year with the option to extend an additional year, uh, increased by support to hundred dollars. Our goal during the next year, and if we decide to extend it in that second year, we'll get a war with it, um, or is that probably necessary to renegotiate this? Figure what their long-term plans. It's by the best interest of town to continue this lease. If the lease is terminated at the discretion of the owner of the town, we'd require to remove all its improvements, and so terminated this lease might require the town to pick up the ass well, which costs more than. Your release, so. If there's any question.
Any question coming from the board, start with trustee Mason?
No question.
Trustee.
David.
Okay. I have no question, thank you.
Trusty Gator.
No comments.
Trusty, you have issues? No. No questions. Are there any comments from the public on this agenda? Maybe a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease of the parking lot.
Second. Any comments?
We need to have the numbers in there of the lease, Dan.
Trusty Mason was, uh, motion was to approve the lease of the town's, in the packet.
Perfect. No further comments from the board. There are no further comments, may I get a roll call on this?
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Gayley.
Yeah.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Regan.
Yes.
Mayor Protonic Hall.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're all waiting for, I've got an item ordinance zero-one dash twenty twenty-three ordinance regulating marijuana, if you're at the ends of.
Last one was real quick, and I was thinking. Um, in front of you today is ordinance one twenty twenty-three, um, this ordinance was discussed at the last. Sort of the work section, the public last rating of board meeting. This ordinance has three primary goals that are discussed in a brief moment. First, first is to apply the two hundred foot residential setbacks will marijuana retail sort licenses to R three zoning. Under the ordinance approved by, um, citizen in November of twenty twenty-one. No license may be approved within two hundred feet of R one, R two, and R four zone districts. That's because when that was approved, there were no R three zone districts, so this kind of corrects that, the land use. Map, the zoning map that we discussed, that we did at the next meeting at work session does include R three, so of that kind of. It made sense to add R three to that. The second piece of this. Ordinance was a recommendation by the town's local licensing authority, it's Kristen Brown. Is it adding language in requiring or? Uh, regarding the hearings for the marijuana licenses, what can be evaluated, what can be looked at by local licensing authority? When liquor, when somebody applies for a new liquor license, the applicant will need to submit petitions, and a lot of information on the needs and desires of the community. There's a lot that goes into those applications in towns, marijuana ordinance doesn't include any of that language. And so if there were a hearing, if citizens showed up at that hearing and say, I live right next door to this, and I don't want that there, the local licensing authority under our ordinances would say. Thank you for coming, um, that's not information that could be considered in this license, and certainly with a public hearing, if I'd be appropriate to add that language. There was a discussion at the last board meeting about whether that should place a high burden on the applicant, and I mean. Really, it was about the language, how that might hear of the local liquor licensing. So the language that was included, that's in the packet in front of you today. It slightly changed the last work session, so it now says that the local licensing authority shall consider that information, so just exactly mirrors the state statute regarding to. Um, the requirements. Another answer. That was, uh, recommendation with licensing authority. The third main piece of this is regarding to setbacks and variance. What this does is it allows the board adjustment to hear requests for variances from the setback requirements that are in. Um, from the setbacks that are in the land use code and liquor license, or excuse me, marijuana. Um, ordinance is currently, while the board adjustment could hear a request for variance from the setback requirements in the land use code, that wouldn't then be binding on the. Local licensing authorities, I mean. That word adjustment can get some of the variance and say that you could open, have this use within, uh, reduce setback area, but then. When they went before the local licensing authority were hearing, that would be binding on them, so what this does, it allows the board of adjustment to hear a request for a variance. If that were granted, that variance would then be applicable to the licensing for our classes. But there was a sort of compromise between reducing setbacks, but offering flexibility for case of your right to equipment. There's already a horse bossing for the board of adjustment to hear requests for variances, um, standards included in set up. I included all that in the packet, um, that was included previously, the connection there that says packet material. Also in the packet are two letters, one is from Piper Compton, uh, revenue of Piper Compton. Regarding your feedback on the ordinance and also on the discussion that happened last time. The other is a letter from Smokin Cowboy, um, representing them. Smokin Cowboy is, uh, an applicant for marijuana. We should have one since that. So. I believe, um, Mr. Nicholas just walked in, who's represents Piper Compton, and there's representative here from Smokin Cowboys. So. I discussed this all with you at length there last night, so, um.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board of trustees, and start with trustee Gator.
So I just wanted to clarify, you know, Dan, in one of the letters, the question was, or the concern was brought up about the burden being placed on the, um, applicant to show that there was a desire of that. My understanding is that language has been changed, and we're looking at tonight to actually mirror what is in the liquor license, which simply says that it shall be considered, it doesn't say that it has to be one way or the other, it just says that it shall be, is that correct?
That's correct, if you look at the board packet on page twenty-six, it would be, uh, our. Wellings Municipal Code, section two fourteen forty, pardon me, the language now reads, the local licensing authority shall consider the needs of the affected neighborhood and the desires of the affected neighborhood's residents and businesses. Including the employees of those businesses, as evidenced by petitions, we have instances, definitely or otherwise, for purposes of subsection, the affected neighborhood shall be here within one half mile of the property. So, yes, that was, that would be a good question.
Okay, perfect, and then I knew, and I think I'm getting some of it correct, and maybe we'll hear more in public comment, but I know there was also concern, and I think one of the other letters about. Um, that if there was a variance given by the board of adjustments, and that could then override other setback requirements within the licensing authority. My understanding, so for example, if. You go to the board of adjustments to request a variance from, let's say, the two thousand foot setback for a school, and that gets approved, that doesn't affect a two hundred foot setback from residential or a five hundred foot setback from another marijuana store, it only applies to that. One area, correct?
That's correct, that was a comment that was brought up in the letter, um, from Smokin Cowboy, it was about the timing of those variance requests, um, in particular. Yeah, a variance was granted, and then another store opened, or or the conditions changed, or they're. That was a good, I have a long conversation with Cody Murray, lady, about this. Variances are really very specific in regard to the one. One setback, so a variant, for example, a variance might be requested for, to reduce the two thousand foot setback from a school, from a particular school, down to, say, eighteen or, or something like that. If that variance were granted, it would be a very specific variance for that. Distance from that news, it wouldn't then say. And it needs all of the other requirements, the the licensing authority, they would still look at all their requirements, so if things change between that variance we initiate and the licensing period. The licensing authority would have to take that into consideration.
Those were my questions with one.
Trusty Gator.
I just have one question to ask you, I noticed on the original ordinance, it says school and preschool in there. And I I pretty much know the answer already, but I just want to get that confirmed in my public record. Uh, it says, uh, within two thousand feet of any school or preschool. Okay, see that on the town ordinance? And then over in chapter two, two, we can, trustee. Uh, what can you get in a second? Make sure the.
Give me one more.
Okay.
I just. You're looking at the current.
Right, I just wanted to make sure the definition for school is school, preschool, daycare, that. Like it shows in the town ordinance.
Our our current town ordinance is not about orders in November of twenty twenty-one, since it defines a school. As a public or private preschool, including a licensed day. A public or private preschool, including a licensed daycare, or a public or private elementary, middle, junior high, or high school, college, or principal campus of college, et cetera, certainly. That's the definition, that's how they changed it all, this one.
Perfect, thank you.
Number ten. Mr. Bruce.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Sam, you just have one question, um, I think there was some concern, uh, last meeting about, uh, potential burden on staff regarding repeat, uh, variance and applications for. Uh, one particular property or or whatever that may be, um, it it just in order to reduce that burden, if the board of adjustments hears a variance request and that request for variance is not approved. Presuming conditions have not changed, and as long as the board of, uh, adjustments member competence composition remains the same, can we disallow applicants from filing additional variance requests for the same property?
I think in most cases, if an additional variance request were filed, it would be a different, there would be some change in 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 that process, you know. No, no, the the short answer is no, if if applicant for a property requests a variance, and it is denied. Um, I certainly wouldn't recommend they file the exact same request for variance, and that probably would be denied as well, but, um, I wouldn't want anything in the in the code that would prevent them from applying for some other. Various certain deposit, the the concern last time wasn't about really, there was a success by, you know, planning director or planning team, wasn't really about one applicant. Doing this over and over and over, it was more that. This process would probably mean that any potential applicant for any marijuana retailer store in the town of Wellington. Set one. Is going to the board adjustments. Board adjustment, and so, um, right now, you know, the board adjustment, I think in twenty twenty-two met. Two or three times, um, there generally the board adjustment does not meet every month, because they don't have that high of a caseload of variance requests, so the concern was that. This would probably mean more variances, variance requests, more work for the board of adjustment, and every variance request requires a considerable work, so. But the repeat one wasn't the biggest concern, it's just a general volume increase, that concern that.
Understood.
Trusty Gator.
I don't have any questions, I am looking for. Can I ask Mr. Samfield a question real quick, I think I know the answer to this, but. At legal counsel, you may have a clarification. So for a real estate transaction, that's generally, that sale is recorded. Right, with county, but it's a business sale, that is not recorded. So if somebody is selling their business and not the land with the business. That's technically private information?
If I.
Like if somebody's, let's say.
If if a business-owned real estate, if an LLC, for example, owned a piece of real estate, and somebody bought the LLC. Yes, there's no property transaction will be recorded, if, are you asking related to the sale of marijuana business? In particular, or no?
No, but you answered my question, thank you.
Because I should know that sale of marijuana business triggers a considerable number of state and local requirements for transfers of that license.
No, a better, let's say, a better application is, let's say, um, somebody is building, uh, widgets in their garage, and then. That business is licensed to that, their house, their garage, but they don't want to sell their house with the business, right, they want to sell their business separately. That would not be a recorded transaction like the real estate would be, right?
Sure, yeah, that would be.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions. Um. At this point, we'll move on to public comment. The first podium, write your name down, state. State yourself for the record, and. That three minutes.
My name is Austin, I are signing back there, um, I'm with Guard Law, I represent Smokin Cowboy, which is a current, uh, licensing in progress here in Wellington. Um, I've had some correspondence with Dan about, um, the quote changes, and to start out with, we don't have, we actually, um, think that the R three zoning change and the neighborhood concern changes are appropriate and and probably recommended. Really, our biggest concern is with the variance process, um, as you guys know, this is already a pretty contentious vote, um, by a lot of voters. And this variance process really would open up, um, more marijuana businesses, um, maybe more than the citizens anticipated, um, more variance requests for city staff. Uh, I've shared a letter, which is in the packet, that I sound like you had part of reviewed, um, that this really does expand all the powers of, um, the board of adjustment to now not just reach the zoning code, and now also reach into the marijuana code, which is. Not something strictly permitted, um, through the the quarter variance, or sorry, quarter of adjustment. Um, additionally, this is, I I view this as kind of a change of use problem, more than it is a variance problem with other zoning. Issues, um, this something kind of changed the character of the neighborhood, and it would be a more concern of citizens than other types of variance changes. Um, we've seen in a lot of places, this kind of opens the floodgates where marijuana industry has so much money, that when there's a a hope or prayer. Everyone comes in because there's seven figures that's eventually, and that I think may be a flood that, um, the board of adjustment is not ready for. Uh, we saw in Adams County, they have a lottery process for their licensing, they got some, we had two hundred applications, uh, so it'd be quite substantial. Um, and again, it's it's just not really what the voters had in mind with the original ordinance and with that vote. Um, I also want to take part of my time quickly to address some of the notes from the Piper Ogden letter that you guys received. Specifically, um, talking about, you know, reducing that down to a thousand foot buffer, and that that's not really, you know, it is common in a lot of places, but two thousand feet is also well-supported, um, Inglewood is two thousand feet. We have places like Solatch to do a thousand feet from every bus stop for a school, which, you know, can be quite restrictive. Um, but it's really community by community, so, right, how much you guys want to let in, um, how that may change your community in a way that you're not wanting, um, citizens are wanting. So, two thousand feet, um, seems to be what voters wanted, what made sense, and and probably should remain in the way that is.
Real quick, you said you mean really fast.
Austin Hyatt.
And you're representing.
Smokin Cowboy, I'm from Barlow. No questions, sir?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today, I know that this is probably the first time everybody has seen me up here, I'm definitely late to the dance, for sure. Um, but my name is Colin Bud, um, I live in Thornton, I have a consulting firm here in Colorado called Genopie Consulting. Um, I've been in the cannabis industry since two thousand and nine, I started my career in Ford Collins. I was born and raised, and really, I grew up going to Wellington Lake number five as a kid, and had some great Fourth Julys there, so the town is a special place in my heart, and I kept up on. The approach that the town is taking to allow medical and recreational dispensaries, and I thought I would take the opportunity today to at least come in and provide. Some context to the process and and understand that there's, uh, this is, I understand that this is the first time that the town boards have the ability to. Um, that take a look at the regulations, change the regulations, and I understand how contentious the vote was initially, obviously passing by one vote, but. A lot more people voted to tax the dispensaries than they did to allow them, which isn't unique in Colorado by any means. Um. I specialize in cannabis compliance, and I help clients navigate, uh, the the cannabis compliance waters from a state and local perspective. Um, and so, uh, when it, when it comes to the licensing application process, I'm fairly well-versed in, uh, how different municipalities take advantage of that. And I think Wellington is extremely unique in that you didn't put a lottery, you didn't put a cap on the number of dispensaries. But you did, uh, or the the valid question, rather, um, did put an excessive amount of restrictions on where these businesses can operate, hence. The fact that none of them have been able to, been able to be open for a year. And so I think when you're looking at this process, what I would suggest is, um, taking a look at, maybe not a a variance request. As much as maybe looking at it as, um, adjusting the setbacks and making it more black and white for applicants. I think if you look at the setback requirements and make adjustments to them, or if you add zone use districts, there's still a a potential for. Additional dispensaries, but I also understand that it's very important to the town to not have too many, and to not have it be a nuisance, and to have them be a good neighbor and a good. Uh, member of the community, and so I think by looking at the setbacks and adjusting them, it makes it very clear for applicants on where they can apply. And it makes the burden on the zoning board, if I'm saying that correctly, the finding, uh, commission. Um, it 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 puts less burden on them, because I tried to open a dispensary, I I looked at it, and I, that's what I do for clients as well, and I couldn't find a place to operate. As it stands right now, and there were multiple restrictions, regulations, setbacks, whatever you like to call them, that disqualified the particular property that I was looking at, so you will have multiple variance requests for one property. And it's going to be difficult to to deal with that, as well as. I think it should just be more black and white for the applicant, so looking at different zones, districts, or different setbacks. Probably a more appropriate. Path, and you would still achieve having a reasonable amount.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah.
John, go on. I didn't see the timer running. You all ready?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Um. Again, my name is Mario. This is I last time. I want to thank this town of board trustees for taking this so seriously. I feel like my client feels like they've very much been heard and they have worked with you as partner. That's their long term. You got the letter from me mainly because you had raised some issues and I respect the fact that you don't want to talk about, you know, in. Don't break your precedent. I hope that that was helpful for you. I think it was in fact, and Mr. Sappian has said you changed kind of the needs and desires. My client thinks that's appropriate. They never wanted to shut out, you know, in their voice. So I think that's very appropriate. I do want to bring out the setbacks. And I think, you know, there is, if we do change the setbacks, I provide a lot more there. I think that also helps resolve the number of various requests. So if it is changed back, you will have that. I think I would invite maybe Mr. Berg could help if you do change them to 1,500 feet or 1,000 feet, how many properties would still be available? I've done some looking here and I think it's still very, very few. If you change it to one of those, will we would be available to do that? The, you know, one of the other pieces that I want to go to is extending out the board of adjustment. You've heard about that and it's whether that's beyond the scope of what it typically does. It may be, but our original interaction with you in the original letter was, you know, it was, we were directed, you know, that might be appropriate. So that's why we were trying to work with. The town, Mr. Sappian, on that, because we understood is maybe we'd have to go to you, but you don't have as much of the expertise as a board of adjustment does this. So we do think that that makes more sense in increasing that. And just to add in. I agree with Mr. Sappian's point that there'd be able to come back a lot of this generally property, right? You don't invite, why is he restricting property rights? I don't think he wanted to do that. But it typically is, if they don't get what they want with the adjustments, then there's an automatic right of appeal to a court. And that's likely what would happen rather than multiple, multiple through. I also, I also want to point out this, you know, we talked about a lot about the will of the people, the statute. I think the vote was that they wanted to have this here, that they wanted restrictions. But also it opened it up to the fact that now after January 1st of this year, this board of trustees to make changes. And they may change to make it work and to make the ordinance work. That was the reasoning for opening that up. So I think it is up to you to kind of do that now. And the last thing I want to address is a lot of these rules are involved around safety. So, you know, we're talking about some setbacks here and there, this much safety. I think it is incumbent to point out the safety that comes along with the. Of dispensary is very high represented state levels of regulation. You have to have someone on the door that checks people as they come in, you know, kids are not going to come in because of, I can answer other questions, but thank you very much for your time.
For the public comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, my name is Tom Donnelly. I'm here on behalf of Grease Properties. Which we actually have gone through licensure and have meant the setbacks on a property here in Wellington. So some of the public comment that you received previously that is not possible, I think we would stand here and attest to you and your, your planning director would also attest to you. That's not true, but we actually have a property that we system back requirements as the. Were laid out by the voters is going through the process right now. I'm going to make three points to you. I have one, which is always a challenge for me. Two are related to politics and one is related to public policy. The first, when the petition signatures were actually turned in for this dollar measure, the town board could have just adopted it, right? But in your wisdom, you knew that this was a contentious issue and should be referred to the voters and listen to the will of the people on this matter. And it was a very tight line, right? By one vote. So this body itself, the elected representatives of the town, they need to feel comfortable to make this decision. But now you potentially default and give this decision-making authority about setbacks to the board of the, board of the, or board of appeals. Which is actually appointed, not even elected by. And so I think, I think that we want to make, think really long and hard about that before you, I mean, you yourselves hold yourself very accountable, make sure that the voters were. The decision-making body and then. To divest that authority from the people to this appointed board, I think is troubling. Number two. We've heard some comments specifically about the election. When this measure passed by one vote, I guarantee you at least two people voted for this because they felt the setbacks were adequate to protect the public from. Negative impacts associated with the use. I guarantee you, two people out of. Whatever the 3,000 that voted for or whatever on the issue, I guarantee you there was at least two. And so the setbacks, I think. Are the reason why we have the measures passed is because of the setbacks and they were, and people felt they were strong protection. Third, with regards to public policy. It's my own thing. I've done, I've done a fair amount of this. You know, none of us want government to pick winners, politicians, right? I mean, that should not be the business of government. My client, Grease Properties, probably spent many times the true value of that property. On a per square foot basis. To buy a property that could meet all of the setback requirements as laid out in your town code. If you allow other business owners to undercut that process. You give them a competitive advantage over our business who did everything right. I know that's not your intention. I know that would never be the town, this town board's. Purview would be to try to allow one business undercut another. And so. We felt like we played by the rules. We want to honor the system that allowed us to do so. We want everyone else to play by the same rules. Thanks a lot for your time.
Oh, quick, quick question. So you kept mentioning the Bries. Property, is that by chance related to the? Smoking gun competition?
They're.
No, sorry, it's smoking.
There's separate business entities, yes. The Breeze is the underlying property owner, similar to your question about real estate transactions earlier. Actually, I thought you were asking on my behalf. The Breeze is the underlying property owner. Smoking Cowboy is a separate business entity that would operate the dispensary, yes, man.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Just water.
Okay, I'd like to thank board of trustees for considering marijuana ordinance. As the only applicant who's been through the board of adjustment for an actual request process. Oh, sorry, school leering, locusts. Was providing some feedback based on our group's experience with process. As you'll recall, a small local businessman who came before the board last October. Requested a setback to the detention bond, which is O P for public. Initial vote on our first attempt was one shy of passing the variance. After working closely with staff and redesigning the entire building plan and getting our initial request reduction from the current 500 feet setback to 173. The request on our second redesigned proposal included a variance of 233. Unfortunately, lost that second request by account of one. From our perspective, as an applicant, there didn't appear to be consistency to the process or an explanation about why we would be granted one. After working closely with the board's recommendations to come up with a better request, we ended up with fewer votes. Along the same lines, the concept of intent was used to justify the passing of one applicant ahead of us and completely with their manner. Than what we applied for. When considering requests for variance, the board of adjustment's one to review findings or approval and identify the town's land use code. After reading the staff comments and staff's opinion of each of the factors A through H, our group felt confident that the board of adjustments would grant the variance. They did not. Again, from the perspective of the applicant, this lack of consistency left us feeling confused and unclear about how to proceed. Our group also noted that town staff had to intervene several times to remind the board of their role in this process. It's not the role of the board to make their determination request, request to variance based on the topic. The board, if the board empowered to grant variance of their binding, the local licensing authority, they need to be based on and consistent with the land use code. Rather than individual interpretation of the code. It's explained to our group by town staff that if we were granted the variance, we would not guarantee passage with the L L A. This new proposal would eliminate the disconnect and cleans up the process. Now the consideration for the marijuana ordinance are being considered. We like to ask the board of trustees to consider changing the setback. From a detention pond zone P to another letter like. D. Or Z, or any other letter you want, just not P. A variance from 15 and a half acre stormwater retention bond, there will be the anchor for seven acre, seven acre mixed use development and 20 plus other businesses. Not only positive pro-business approach, but also result which aligns the town's town law into its overall master plan. I'm happy to take any questions about our proposals tonight or to provide additional feedback on our experiences. As an applicant going through the process, the board believes that the.
Thank you.
Matthew Mollid. Like to. Just comment a little bit about, obviously, we know that things were a little broken. We know, I understand it was. Good intent for everybody. I mean, starting something because I understand what is in the position it is. But that's now, after a year of. It not working. And like, like Rose mentioned, one property works. To me, that's not working. Because if there's no competition, if there's no, I don't know what kind of. Business or town we want, if there's no competition for anything. That's not a overall good thing for the public. So. I just appreciate you guys' effort in knowing that there's something that's got to be done about it. So let's figure out. How we can improve it or fix it. It's never a problem with the first go because. The first go was intended to work, when I intended to thinking that this was going to be a good thing and the setbacks clearly don't work. And it's not just from, I mean, there's quite a few people that's approached this, looked at this. So my request simply is this. Guys need to figure out what really works and one property with no competition does not work. It's not good for the public. And also comment on safety when it. Everything's talked about public safety. The requirements that's under the licensee. It's, there's nothing unsafe about it compared to, you know, they have so much requirement that they have to meet. So it's not like it creates an opportunity for. Kids and whatever. It really don't. You know, I understand the purpose of it or the thought of it, but just asking you guys, you got to do something with it. We think that's how we move the town ahead. That's how we do business and it's how we get other problems, not just this one. Thank you.
Make it a motion and a roll call on this agenda, I know.
So, no, we did have a question. I have one board member who is currently on an airplane right now, so not able to attend via Zoom, who did have some. Comments that they'd like to share and I know they'd like to hear from what the public comment was as well. I'd like to ask if this board be willing to consider postponing the vote until we get to our next meeting. We did a similar thing. A few months ago, Mary Protown was in transit so that she was able to review the meeting and then vote on that item. Plus would be if this board's willing to consider that, that we consider.
Absolutely.
I have my grants. All right, I'd like to move that we postpone the voting on this item. To our regularly scheduled meeting on the 24th of January.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Daly, yeah. Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Reagan?
Yes.
Mayor Protown McDonald, yeah. Mayor Josie?
Yes.
Thank you.
And could I make one more comment? And we had a lot of public comment where there's new items since we have another two weeks for staff to work on this based on the input from public comment. Are there any adjustments or things that board members would like staff to consider bringing back to us? We have two weeks to. Do we want to try and incorporate anything refer to public comments? So. I wanted to throw that out there since we have the time.
Yeah, I'll start with Trustee Mason.
I'm not holding my comments until the next public meeting.
I am curious about. The public. Setbacks to public and. Understanding. The initial ordinance. And the function of public zoning. Which would. Otherwise be like parks. You know, so I would understand why there would be a setback from a park. For example. But its attention pond. In my mind. Would be a fantastic place for. A neighbor. To a commercial park. Because no one, no one could be there. And that's absolutely no traffic. That's not a neighbor that's going to complain about anything. A giant detention pond, so. That's something I'm curious about. As the potential setback question. So I don't know. That's something I heard tonight. That is a very real question I have because that's something that doesn't make sense to me. So that's something I'd like to explore more. I don't know what my exact question is, but that was something that alarmed me. That was a late laugh I heard, so. But otherwise. I've heard a lot of great comments, so a lot of thinking and I definitely would love for. Trustee Keith to be able to review the video and hear all the same comments that we heard and then. Or, you know, any other additional follow-up from those who spoke tonight to come back if you have any additional items. So I really appreciate the comments tonight. But that's the major one that stood out to me.
Because you did. So the one question I would like to give a little bit more clarity on, so apologies, Mr. Tapienza. I know there were concerns brought up about. Are we giving purview of the marijuana code over to the board adjustment? So if you can maybe just be prepared to speak to that next week. I understand the concerns on that. If I look at it, just because they happen to be in marijuana, they should not. You know, every property owner in the town has the ability to go to the board of adjustments to their variance. And so from my perspective. I don't think that they should be disallowed from having that because they have to be in marijuana shop. But I would like to make sure that we have a full understanding of, are we giving purview that we shouldn't be to the board of adjustments by anything that we're doing? So if we can make sure to have some clarity around that, just so we are very clear on what exactly can and can't happen with that. Because I do want to make sure. See this, we're advocating a responsibility, but I do want to make sure that we are not missing something that we should be seeing. I know that there were concerns that were brought up about the setbacks. While I do care, Trustee Daly's comments about a pension pond, I'm not sure why that's. Zoned as public, but I think I would like more information on that, but. The problem is though, I don't think we can say, well, it doesn't count for one piece of public or other, but it would be good to have more information on that if there's a way to address that because again. That be public buildings, parks and things like that. So I would appreciate a little bit more clarity on either that specific situation or just in general what that would look like. With the other setbacks, I understand that the 2,000 feet. Originally circulated. I know that there were changes that were made as there was the court that was going on. That was what was originally circulated to petitions. That number stayed into the vote sent to the voters. So. I'm not inclined to look at changing those right now, but I do agree with the statements that was made by one of the gentlemen that absolutely. Everyone has the right to support adjustment. So there should not be any limits that we place on that. So if someone wants to connect for adjustments, that's their right as property owners. Trustee.
Yeah, one thing I think we have to really keep in mind here is the will of the people. And again, they voted for the particular setbacks that we are looking at right now. And again, just like Mr. Donnelly said, if it had changed any from that, it may not have passed. We need to hear what the voters said. We need to keep. We need to hear what the voters said, we need to keep that forefront. Uh. Another thing, I just, you know, hope. Going to the board of adjustment, I hope it's very minimal changes that they're looking at at that point. I mean, if they give away a thousand feet or five hundred feet, uh over that two thousand, then. I would definitely have a problem with that. But I mean, if it's within reason, you know, with a couple feet, twenty feet, whatever, I can understand that, so. Hopefully, I think hopefully you'll bring some more clarification on that. On what the board of adjustment can cannot do and such at that point.
I think I can bring a little more information about that when we, um I'll talk with the. Playing director bird in a bit, maybe can also. Answer the questions I have more adjustments.
Perfect. Appreciate it, thank you.
Number ten?
Thank you, I think there was some really great public comment tonight, but we're trying to accomplish. Restrictions that are reasonable, consistent and defensible, right, I mean, those were all words that were used. Tonight by by public. There was a comment that was made, I don't think it was a whole public comment, but off candidly, it lasts, I'm about to discuss. And having a background in real estate development, it really got me thinking. Um, you know, when a development doesn't fit a developer's narrative or there's a challenge. They'll buy out the challenge. So I would be curious to know what daycares or daycare centers. Could potentially be. Bought out or impacted. By not considering a setback change. Because we know that affordable daycare, especially in this community, is a challenge. So if we can take a look and find a compromise on those setbacks. That it's going to minimize that impact or potential impact. I think it's something that we should take into consideration. It it's just not something I've thought about before, but. Especially after the comment this evening, I think that. We should either, I'm I'm really glad that Hefty Gator requested that we bring it back, either the next meeting or maybe even at a work session. Can't really talk about it.
I mean, I'm just gonna be sharing, basically, we're from Trusty Bailey and Gator and. Number ten, um everybody up here. Uh just gonna need, we need more information, um. Yeah, just need to make sure that it's something that board of adjustments scope can handle, if we're gonna go that route. Setbacks, things that we should make as most educated decisions we make. Obviously, best for town and match the will of the voters. Uh so, yeah, I think. Man, obviously, we're gonna postpone it, but uh. Is there a way we can? Did a work session in before the next meeting, yes.
Well, next week, now we have, um. Uh. Sam Light from Cer子coming for a one hour presentation. And then we have scheduled the board of trustees goal setting, which we could postpone if needed.
I. I believe this is a an important decision that is worth. Post plan or goal setting. In my my opinion, I would like to hear more.
What, what was the proposed date again?
The seventeen, or our regular work session next Tuesday.
Correct.
So my request would be, because I I the goal setting, I think is important, is that is telling staff what. She's focusing on, but maybe what we do is we, if we add this to, we do the this item first. And then depending on what time we finish with that, then whatever time we can, we get through as much goal setting as we can, and then maybe we. Tie in some time at the end of our next meeting, if our agenda is not too long to finish up the whole setting. So maybe we give, we need to, we split the goal setting up, I still like to try and get some of it done, um depending on obviously how long we have discussion on this, but that way would allow us to. Not do one instead of the other, but do this one first, because I agree with Mayor of this. I think they're both important, but this one, you know, we have publicers speak about this tonight, so I want to make sure we're not dragging their feet, um but I also want to ensure we get the goal setting. Um finished that, so it's out and have a clear direction to run as fast as they can.
One, I don't wanna, I'm sorry to interrupt, and and I. We would need to be open to, you know, we're touching on the twenty fifth or the first, we are asking staff to do a lot of research and trying to over. I mean, is that?
The decide it was forward to the next. So.
I I think we can get. I think we can get a lot of misinformation for a work session even next week, I don't think that's actually gonna be a a problem. If the board does want to have that conversation next week. And I'm happy to put that in to get this moving forward, I think it's a. Worked while, and we've done a lot of research down, we've done a lot of. I think I could answer still these questions, um and then play a little conversation with by director bird about this, and I would like to. Pretty much everybody who spoke this evening, uh make sure I have your contact information, because I would love to talk to you all over the next. Week as well, so, but I think we can get it together, if if you want.
Everybody agree?
Uh well, Sam Light would be first, then this would be after. Okay, let's do it, work session. Thank you. All right. We will now close the regular meeting and open up the liquor licensing boardy board. Time being seven twenty five P M, you need your roll call please.
Trusty Daily, Trusty Gator?
Here.
Trusty Daly, Trusty Maintenance?
Here.
Trusty Vegan?
Here.
Mayor Protown McDonald, here, Mayor Shosie.
Yes.
The only item on the liquor license for your agenda, review of not to the Bob, you are in, Ms. Garcia.
So the application uh was submitted, um included their annual renewal for the hotel and restaurant liquor license, a review of the application found the establishment is in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State. It is currently held by the county sheriff's office, reporting no issues directly related to related to the. To the establishment liquor license, and staff that can approve on the signing.
May you can I have a question?
I just wanted to share her, my daughter is employed at the T bar. I have no conflict, I don't have financial gain, but I just wanted that for clarity that my daughter isn't employed there. No.
That's good, that's good. Um, any further comments? No. We're talking from the public on this agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh liquor license uh renewal for a local Bob's ski bar in a group of operations, L L Hotel and Restaurant Liquor.
Second.
Make it a roll call, please.
Trusty Gator?
Yeah.
Trusty Daly?
Yeah.
Trusty Mason?
Yes.
Trusty Vegan?
Yes.
Mayor Protown McDonald, yes, Mayor Shosie.
Yes.
Onto reports, Mr. Tapienza. Um, the board's, the board knows on Friday, um marijuana, excuse me, marijuana, the local licensing authority of a public hearing regarding. Our application for smoking help work. Here concluded the licensing authority, you know, issue a formal decision, we'll be issued a written decision. So, but the area was relatively uneventful, um and that's moved in a way to allow potential operation.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
Now report tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees, Kelly Hodeling, Deputy Town Manager. Within our budget this year, um we uh budgeted the community survey, so we we've done this once, but it was a free survey, if you recall. Um so we do have funds to do this, and we're gonna bring this to a work session, I think. Um in January.
Like a special work.
A special work session, um just to get some feedback from the board, we do have a a base amount from a company that we're interested in going with. But there are some additional things that we're curious if you want to add to it, so one would be like special questions, so I know the board's considering strategic plan. So do we want to budget for that and include that in the contract? The urgency of why I want to get it done in January is we could lock in in twenty twenty two's crisis, um so I've been talking with the company. And so if we do it in January, we can still do that, and some other questions might be, do you want Spanish translation? Um and there's a couple others, so I I'm more curious about what add-ons do you want to have, and so all are included within the packet. Examples from peer candidates in Colorado that are somewhat size to us, and why this is the company that we're interested in going with, but just need a little bit more direction. Thank you.
Yeah. Um. Trusty Mason?
No report?
Trusty Daly?
I have a few items, the first one is next Wednesday, um Commissioner, County Commissioner Jody, Jody Shuck McNally will be. The speaker for the Women of Wellington hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, she's gonna be telling us about what's going on in Laramore County. Um and it'll be on Wednesday, next Wednesday night, that'll be really helpful, she's also gonna be talking about partnerships to town hall, so. That'll be, it's called the Women of Wellington, men are invited as well. And men often attend, so you can, it's usually women speakers, that's what it is, so please attend. Um that if you want more information, please let me know, or follow the Chamber of Commerce. I have been invited to attend and participate in the Pooter School District State of our youth. Um. Events where we're going to talk about creating spaces that encourages them to belonging in our community. Specifically outside of the school day, increase access to mental health providers, increase awareness of mental health services. Available to youth and access to these services and provide training on self-regulation and coping skills. Uh been invited because of my um participation in early childhood education, um and and um. And as a role within the town of Wellington, so I wanted to let you guys know that's gonna be the next fall into Mondays. Um at the Museum of Discovery. Um Thursday, we're gonna be talking through some of those items with the uh Policy Council for Solid Waste. Making some progress on those items I talked about uh in the past, so I'm really looking forward to that. Um and then this last week, we talked with Commissioner Capalis about Laramore County broadband opportunities. Um Laramore County has the largest opportunity in the state of Colorado for underserved and underserved and unserved. Broadband users in the whole state, but our Laramore County is the most well happening. Um so they're talking about um. Great opportunities and how we can partner with them and making sure that we're educated and what opportunities are rising. We'll learn more about how we can participate in the future, I just really appreciate that they're keeping us in the loop, and I know that our staff on top of making sure that we have opportunities as well. And they're really leading in the way of knowing what opportunities are available to us, so thank you to staff for doing that. Um and then the last thing I wanted to do is ask this board. Um if you would be interested in. Um. Considering, uh and in my opinion, as we talk about marijuana and the will of the voters. A major part of the ordinance that was that was voted on and accepted by our voters. Was that sales tax for marijuana sales would benefit a rec center in Wellington. Um. And. I think that that was a major part of why people voted, and that was talked about, it was a major talking point when people were voting for this. We have the authority within our board to change the tax from three point five percent to five percent. Um with. And then we have the authority to do that on our board, what I would recommend is bring that choice and that decision and have an opportunity for our board to make that choice. And earmark that money towards a rec center, um so I was wondering if I would have. Your permission to bring that question to this board, so we can make that decision and see if this board would be.
Yeah.
Well, I. I think that is a great idea. However, I do think one of the ID things that I do want to take in consideration with a collection of sale tax marijuana. The impact that we talked about, well, public safety. And I think. We've talked about the ability to fund our thorough contracts and add on to that. That may be one area considered as well.
Would it be okay if we brought the question and we can talk about where all of our money's going then?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it, yes.
Okay. Because that's, I think that's, that's a big question to talk about, so, yeah, let's do it. So. Can we talk about that more than basically?
So. Yes, so you know, priority right now is that I. Now we are, and so we have some foundational things that we're working on, I do have that on our future meetings calendar already for April. Um, that seems fine with me, if that works, that'll give us a chance to take care of some of the issues with that, that we need to take care of with that high end staff and then. Um give charity an opportunity to do the research that she needs to do on that title, cool, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. All right, um so not a ton to go through, um we, the finance committee did have a meeting yesterday. Um wanted to take just a moment to speak in regard to the finance committee, I know there was one of the questions that was brought up by uh Nick or David, who is. One of the members, he's our vice chairman of finance committee, is, so there were some people that kind of just like, what is the finance committee? Um and so there was some confusion on that, so I'll read that in just a second, but did want to let the board know, I believe in our next regular meeting, they put together this kind of a. A letter of support from the finance committee for just the work that our staff is doing for transparency and even the financial controls. That our finance department's been working on, and so really they just felt that they wanted to put something together, um just showing that, hey, our staff is doing a lot of work and really trying to get the. Finances of the town on track and they're working hard at it and that. You know, these are finance professionals saying we really want to show support of that, so I, my understanding is that letter will be coming to the board trustees. Next meeting in January, um so that'll be coming, and then I I already said earlier, they were hugely helpful in just the review beyond it, so. Again, they're just continuing to do great work, um so real quick, I'm just gonna read the overview from the website, the Wellington Finance Committee Advisory Board was adopted by the trustees on May tenth, twenty twenty two. For ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty two, the ordinance contains additional details about the purpose and duties of the advisory board. The summary of the advisory board responsibilities included review of the town's annual draft budget. Make recommendations to the trustees regarding the town finances, annual budget and long range financial planning. Review town revenues and expenses on a monthly basis. Review reports generated by outside consultants on matters that have financial impacts such as rate studies and contacts for banking and financial services. Provide an independent review of the town's financial reporting processes and internal controls. Um so that's just kind of a definition of that, um we were going for seven members of the finance committee, we had seven people applying. So we lucked out and we got amazing people, like we have. A huge background, we've got two bankers on the finance committee, we've got an auditor on the finance committee, we've got someone purchasing, we've got two accountants. And then we also have one member of the finance committee who doesn't have a major financial background, which is amazing, because she helps us to make sure that when we're talking about things, it's able to come across. To someone who doesn't have a finance background, because when you're talking in finance terms, that's like, well, when we're trying to how we make our finances more. Readily available and understandable by the public, it's not helpful to have a bunch of finance people at times, so just the makeup of the committee has really been phenomenal, so. Just continuing to do a great job.
Awesome.
So I got.
Thanks. Trusty.
Yes, I just attended the uh Laramore County Behavioral Health uh meeting and. They informed us that the facility that they're building on South Port Colombe is sixty five percent complete. And they should be. Beginning to move in at the beginning of August, and they should be taking their first client. Uh November first, so it's really on. Line at the moment, also too, they're looking at funding right now. For uh an adolescent care facility there too on that campus. So they're gonna have a place for, you know, the adults and young kids, and you know, we got a major problem with the kids here too, so. That's gonna be a great uh program, uh Lori Stole was the director. Were there, and she did offer to make a presentation to our board and to the town up here. And just to show and explain what. Her committee or her organization down there can do and can give to the town of Wellington. You know, there's uh so much mental health need all over, and I know we're not exempt from it, so. I think that would be a good thing that we could get scheduled in, so let me know when and we can do that.
Yeah, I'm. Not. Right, well, it's nice to be back, twenty twenty three, guys.
I know.
Got bigger heads, we have a lot of things to be done for this town, I'm good to do, um. Thank you, everybody, we're working together, coming together as a team, we're good town, appreciate everything on you. Um, that's all I got. So I will adjourn the meeting, everybody say.
Bye.
Bye.